Okay Cindy, you're up.
All right. So for the water system improvement, Oakra application grant applications, we have to have our proposal in by April 29th. And we are required to do state public hearing prior to that date. So I was going to ask if we could do one on the 25th of April, that Monday at 5 o'clock. I know you do not hold board meetings that night, but if I could at least get maybe one board member here. Two, I mean they're all welcome, but it doesn't require a whole board to be here. If that's acceptable and then I give them the advertisement for Brandy to put them to people.
And that's for Oakra Cindy?
Correct.
Okay, well, we need, we need to keep moving. I know we got a revised PER from the engineer updated cost. I think we're like 2.6, now we're up 2.754 million on the anticipated cost. So not, not surprised. I don't know, anybody have time to go through this thing? There's just a lot here.
Why don't you give us the quick numbers?
Well, the, the big one I wanted to see is what the total cost is, how it increased. You know, there's a lot, a lot of stuff here. You know, out the plant and the main line, one of the two main lines coming to town is going to be replaced. And there's a lot of valves in town to be replaced, some fire hydrants, I believe even on here. A lot of detail. Do we, do we have? We have to make a decision by what, the 25th that we were, do you want to go exactly with this?
Yes.
Okay, so we have.
Well, actually you need to make a decision quickly because this document and the changes that you're proposing to implement need to be available for the public.
Okay.
And we put the date on the 13th.
Okay.
That it would be available to the public for review. So we're going to adjust this plan. We can write out in the denim, like we're not going to change.
Basically, we need to adopt it.
Six of the fire hydrants or whatever it happens to be, but.
We need to adopt it, that's the term, yes.
And Nick's gonna, he thought, and he still second his commissioners, but he thought he could put together a resolution for you pretty quickly.
Well, there's not anything in here that. Probably doesn't need replaced. I don't think it's really about the only change from the first one is the updated cost. I mean, have you looked at it in detail much, Cindy? I mean, what, what? What's your thoughts?
I mean, it's not my department, so I don't really know. I can weigh on the changes that need to be made, but I just, before I start committing you in the sense of all these grant applications, I want to ensure that everybody's on board with this total.
Okay. Do you have any comments on this?
Did Cody happen to look at those?
Yeah. This was the revised PER taking into consideration some of the work that we've already done and updating some of the things that we added and deleted. And it's, it's the full report for the project that I'd like to recommend. I think the total amount is 2,754,855. I don't know how we're doing on funding.
Well, you know, originally we estimated 2.6 million Jeff, and then, and we, we were going to use six, hopefully get a grant for 600,000, we're going to use American Rescue funds, 500,000. And then the rest is going to come from various places with some internal financing in there. Avoiding bonding costs, using SRF money, you know, it'd save us 200. Where's that sheet at? I've got too many sheets. So yeah, yeah, it.
It's, it's right in Wal-Mart, I think.
It's not extremely open unless bids come in much higher than what they anticipate here. We're, we're, we're still okay. Yeah, we were going to, to take care of the balance internally for a few years, we thought. And that would save us, you know, some money.
Yeah.
Well, so as far as all the stuff we're doing, I know we're doing water valves, doing hydrants.
Line replacements. We're doing a lot of work at the, the treatment plant itself. As far as refurbishing some of the pipes, H-back. Yeah, a lot of stuff.
Well, I, I think there might be some concern when, when you apply for grants. Well, what is it Cindy? They talk about the need to, to, to.
We have to be able to justify the need as in not just the need of the water department, but the need of your constituents, basically.
Okay.
And your, your users. So we have to demonstrate how these changes are going to benefit the end user. Now, that's not to say if there's not some things that need to happen with some things, say at the treatment plant, if it's a door to the pump house, things like that. I mean, that doesn't really demonstrate a, a benefit to, to the end user. And we can list things like that as what they would call an ineligible expense. But still that the town, you know, is going to be doing this as part of the project. So we'll have to get. I'm hoping we don't have to get creative in the sense of.
Well, you know, my, my, my thought process, you know, it's just the main, one of the two main lines coming to town is a big deal. You know, that's one of the biggest things in there. I'm, I'm excited to give her place.
Yeah, and I think as far as me hating my hat on the needs of the town, I think our water, water audit loss.
Well, that's the other issue, yes.
As high as what it is would be a great justification.
You have like a 25% loss.
Yeah, we're, we're sending you, I think, was Cody says that we're sending the 800,000 to town and we're, we're actually billing for 400,000. So, you know, we have a significant water loss that we're treating and we're paying for treating.
Yeah.
But we're, we're not generating revenue off it. And that means that the payers on the, on the different rate hike seasons, when we go to do that again are paying more. And I don't, I think that's a good justification in, in my view.
Yeah. Yeah, we're way above the average.
The thing Jeff and we'll talk about this Wednesday is, so let's say that there is a million of this that's truly that we can say is a end user benefit. So we say a million, and so if the grant was 700,000 and the, and then the towns match, that all comes together because you have to have at least 20% match. And then we can say the remainder of it is, would be ineligible for Oakra.
Yeah.
But it might be something that we can do on the SRF. So this may start looking funky when we look at budgets and, and what goes into which category and things like that. I just want to create some awareness around these numbers and what we may be doing relative to that to make these grades. And then I'm, I'm going to meet with Jeff on Wednesday and we're going to talk about, you know, anything he may have collected in the sense of complaints, logs, repairs, the town's done. That again is that end user benefit that we have to demonstrate.
Okay. Well, so Nick needs to create a resolution for us to adopt.
That's just adopting the plan?
Yeah, yeah, adopt the, the preliminary engineer report. What do you both think? Well, I'm.
We have to come in and sign it when it gets resolution ready, which it would need to be done before the 13th. Before the 13th, is that what you said?
Yeah.
You made a motion?
I made a motion.
On favor?
Okay, you making a note for Nick?
So we gotta have it by the 13th. We're going to have a public meeting on the 25th.
If that is okay with you guys to do that.
It's mine with me. I mean, I'm sure I can be here if everybody else.
At 5:00 PM on the 25th?
So please encourage your friends and neighbors to attend on the 25th because public meeting is a positive on the application.
Probably should advertise.
This resolution will be to adopt that PER for the district. And with that all being said, that motion, is it okay to move forward for this to be published for next week's paper?
Yeah, so say so the dates, okay? Okay. You might proof it for me, Brandy, make sure I do.
Okay, well, thanks Cindy.
Well, you want to continue Jeff? Thank you Cindy.
You're welcome.
Still waiting on the award from Community Crossings. Don't expect to have any time. Met with MPa and we talked about a few things at different times. But the, the first one I'll discuss is a project. I, I think it's come up before in talking with Dan Jurvis. I think we need to get some traction on it now since we're not going to be worried about the alley over there on Jefferson too much. And that's adding three phase, connecting three feet, excuse me. Three-phase power from Benjamins to Silster. And what that will allow us to do is it will allow us to put in a str- a switch to feed the water pumps or water wells using a different route. And give us a little bit of redundancy in that area, which I think is a really good idea. Dan's going to try to work up some cost estimates. We'd like to do this as part of a, a maintenance project, I believe he said. And I know that, I know that one thing, as I got to looking at that, there's a big huge ash tree there on 36 that's right in the middle of our line. So I would definitely have to take that tree down. I've talked to one vendor already and it's about a $4,900 tree by their estimate. Because it is a huge dead ash. That's right next to the highway. So we'll have to get in to offer minutes. I'm pretty sure Landowner allows to, to drop it in his open property. I haven't talked with him yet, but I know him pretty well. I think he'll be okay with that as long as we get it all cleaned up and everything.
Where is Sil Street? I'm just drawing a blank.
By Berry's Mini Mart.
Okay. Goes east and north and south.
Three-phase there by the cell, cell bar, but it three-phase ends at Benjamins.
Okay.
So if we run poles and three-phase down that two-block, three-block stretch, that would give us another way to feed our wells in case something went down somewhere else in town.
So where would you put a switch at there?
Right there by Sil Street.
I mean, on the north side or the south side of 36?
Yeah, that, I, I don't know that yet. Dan's going to take a look at it.
Okay, I just.
If we don't have anything writing about this, I just want to let you know we're preliminarily looking at this as a possibility for maintenance project.
Well, I mean, I, that just seems like an odd location for, for three-phase to come down and put a switch in. I mean, unless you were going to put it at the cell bar or, you know.
Well, how does three-phase get over to the welding shop? They have three-phase.
Yeah, on that stretch that goes on down, I think.
Goes on out to the wells? Part of the stretch that goes on out to the wells.
Okay, comes off that. Okay, well, that's, that'd be interesting to see, yeah.
Just FYI on that. Cemetery weed eating quotes I do have too now. The second one I got in, I don't remember who it was, today or Friday? I couldn't remember. But it was considerably more, obviously. And the best one I have is still Billy Betts on that. I'll come back to that in a minute if you don't mind. Item number four is the one thing I do need to get done tonight. And that's simply making a determination on what we want to do with summer help and if we want to contract out the weed eating. I sent you all kind of an analysis of that with some kind of the pros and cons about the, the summer work required and all the ongoing projects and shortness of manpower. What it boils down to is option one is hire three part-time staff. Not hire out the weed eating, we'll just do it all in-house. And option two is hire three part-time staff and contract weed eating. I don't think that's feasible given my budget numbers. So I kind of ruled that one out. Option three is hire two part-time staff, contract weed eating. And I'd have to pull an additional 10K from lights for, to do that, an additional appropriation. And then four would be hire one part-time staff and contract weed eating. And that would be fully funded if we went that way. So.
Well, my opinion, I don't know where we're at budget wise with, I mean, contracting out for weed eating, I don't think it's going to fly. I mean, in my opinion. Well, I mean, I would rather put a full-time employee on and pay him a little bit over what, I, I mean, even if we paid between those two, we'd be getting somebody 52 weeks a year or well, 51 weeks a year. So, but I mean, that's just my opinion.
Well, Lord knows we've lost a lot, a fair number of, we don't have a very large staff.
Well, yeah, I, I, I forgot. I, I remember, but Jeff reminded me one of his things here. We're down a person from last year. We lost a full-time person last year Jeff, and we never, we didn't get him replaced. What, what did we do?
That was motor vehicle that we lost a position to because of the funding cut. And we're also down one part-time worker from the cemetery, I think, because we just didn't have money there also.
Well.
That happened from two years ago.
Yeah, obviously we need, we need more labor.
So when was the last time we had at least two people in cemetery?
We didn't have last year. We just had Mark last year. So it would have been two years ago. And we have Rodney for four days a week. And generally, we started him, I think, in late March or early April, and he went all the way out until funding ran out, which was generally November or so.
And now sometimes he like, before he was, when he was going to floor, he liked this, but he's not going to do that.
We don't Jeff, just looking at our manpower shortage, we, we, I'm thinking we need to hire another full-time person, regardless of all the weedy.
Well, I'm not going to be opposed to that. Don't get me wrong, I just don't know where I'm going to pull it from.
Well, well, you know, we can start, we, we can spread them across a few utilities. I mean, they're obviously going to be used in multiple jobs.
Everybody multitask.
Um, yeah, everybody's multitasker to town. What do we start at these days Jeff?
I think we started Tony out at 12 or 12:50.
Okay. And they have insurance, have retirement. I mean, you know, you throw in all the other things. It, it's, it's a decent starting job with the benefits. And then, and they, they can progress fairly quickly if they work hard. You know, the next question is, well, what's, what's the likelihood of getting someone? Not great out there from what I hear.
Nope.
So, you know, we hire another, well, anybody else want to chime in here? I'm just.
Well, we need to hire, but can we find somebody?
You've got two people part-time right now. I mean, as far as the, could go to work. I mean, if they're ready to go and they're.
Yeah, I've already started Rodney because I've, I've got to have Rodney regardless.
So, and then where's Pam at? I mean, she.
That depends on what we do with our, our part-timers. Now, I've talked to Pam. She's willing to do part-time. She would actually love to do that. And I, I would love to have her. But, you know, whether or not she's wanting to spend a lot of time weed eating at the cemetery, that's, I don't know if she'd be gangbusters for that.
Well, I mean.
Well, if we get a full-time person.
What kind of schedule was she looking at?
Yep, she can do a regular schedule in the summertime. And right now.
She's driving a bus, but.
She's still driving her bus. So with the time change and everything, she could do a little bit when she gets done with her bus route.
Well, you have.
In the evening. We've got Saturday and Sunday. Where she could do some work. And I would have no problem letting her do that. She knows what needs done. She's experienced with it. And she'd do a good job, especially down there at the park. Taking care of knocking all that stuff out.
Okay, so if we find another full-time person, we'll, we'll spread them across water, sewer, light. I mean, I can see them using for, you know, trimming trees, probably pulling them out there. I mean, we could justify probably all three utilities. Maybe a little in store market. We have 5,000 beds in the store market for some part-time. Uh, if you hire another full-time person, you've got two part-time, maybe find a third full-time, and you know, we, we need to get more people in here.
No, I've got, I figure I've got 30,000.
In part-time wages, yeah.
In part-time wages. So if I had two part-time and contracted weed eating, I'd need an additional 10. If I hire three part-time, then that's, it's fully funded. And that'll just mean that once a week, you know, I've got the whole crew out there and we're weed whacking it. You know, that's that. But and if, and if that's the way we need to go, that's the way we need to go.
Well, I think that's what we should try Jeff and see what we can do. I mean, what do you guys think?
Well, the two, three part-timers?
Well, full, another full-time, definitely. We can, yeah, I think we need to have another full-time person. Younger the better.
Yeah, I'm freaking out there. No, I do. Twice that, I mean.
And then you can get three part-timers, get them. Yeah.
All right, so you want to get three part-timers and advertise for a full-timer?
Yeah.
Starting at, at 12?
Whatever we start at.
Brandy, do you remember if it was 12 or 12:50? I can't remember off the top of my head. 12? Okay, we had 12.
You know, let's see what we can find. We'll have him four months out of the year.
And even if they leave, we'll just keep firing, keep for six months of the.
Well, we'll see what happens doggone it. We, we need to find, find some, some help.
So be it. All right, three part-timers plus one full-timer. We'll just call them at-large, employee-at-large?
Yeah, let's see how they work out. And yeah, they might end up falling into ones, two spots more than others. And we can adjust that allocation of their expense based on that. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, one full-timer, 12 bucks. All right, I get that advertisement. That, that was a big one on my agenda. I've been kind of worried about.
Well, appreciate all your analysis here, you know. You spent a lot of time trying to figure it out for us.
We gave you the information. Like I said, you guys are, are the decision makers on that. So thank you for.
Can I ask a question of Nick before we?
Yay.
Based on part-time or on the full-time? We're going to advertise this as a full-time employee, do general labor or whatever. I mean, how, I don't know how to put this. I, I mean, is, how can we put this to where we hire somebody that's.
Able to do.
Healthy enough to do the job.
Okay. Can weed eat, can lift certain amount of weight? I mean, some jobs have requirements as far as.
50 pounds or something like that.
Yeah, I mean.
Job description just needs outlining.
What their requirements of the job would be. And you just have to be physically capable of fulfilling the requirements. I mean, the nature of the job is such that it's one that does require a certain physical thing.
Yeah, I mean, just like tugging on a weed eater for five or six hours. I mean.
Yeah. I mean, it's different when the physical requirements are such that it doesn't have a factor in the job. But when the job is physical nature, it's okay to do that. So yeah, the description would just be the key that you must be able to lift certain amount and, you know, what the tasks are.
I'll be sure to include that in the advertisement. All righty. Electric Department Supply from Brownstown, 12,47972. I'd like for you to approve that order. Brett notes that this is pretty much the same as what he always does. This time of year, it's about a 30% increase. Usually the same stuff will cost us about eight. So this time it's about 12, which I think is more 25. But anyway. The other thing to note too is that includes some crossarms and braces that we're going to be using over the ball fields. So it's part of that expense. Have a motion to approve?
Motion made, second.
On favor? While you're talking about crossarms, did you guys get the, the trenching, the draining taken care of?
Still haven't heard anything from anybody on that.
I mean, I know we're supposed to get like two inches of rain, but at least we still.
The dumpster for out there at the park in the ball field has been delivered. So it's sitting out there. I've got trash cans that I'll set out because I think they've started their practices already. And the gates are open.
Are the bathrooms?
The bathrooms are open. Had calling Mike Paul. They had to do some work on the restrooms. They had some leaky toilets and leaky valve, one of the sinks. So we get a bill from him on that. We already talked about the water project with Cindy. 41 North Sewer Expansion. Nick, do you have anything on that? Or we signed sealed and delivered yet?
No, I reached out to the attorney for Mr. Gooch and just like Structure Point says, I haven't heard back from him. So unless he's contacted Structure Point, I didn't receive response. So I'm going to call him tomorrow.
Didn't we give him a tender?
I talked to Brian today Friday. Is there any reason why we can't go ahead and approve?
Well, I've got some emails, yeah, today from Brian.
I, what's, I haven't seen any.
Okay, yeah, thi- this was just, I think, I don't know, I think you might have sent something. I think it all started with an email from Jeff and it snowballed from there. Yeah, yeah. Because yeah, it's like, okay, we're meeting and I, can we get some dates tied down? So I asked Brian about, well, you know, apparently we just did a, a one payment for property. We have one left. I asked him, you know, what about the, the last property? It's just a matter of getting paperwork signed is my understanding.
He gave verbal proof in his email. His attorney even emailed me saying that he's going to sign.
Well, that's.
But that's different than having signed.
Right, I know, I know.
Deadline of 10 days.
Well, if he agreed verbally, hadn't got the paperwork done, there's multiple steps in this thing. I don't know. There's some company that does all this right away stuff.
Right, it's through Structure Point. They have.
Well, they, they just contracted out.
Right, they have somebody that handles all of that.
So anyway, I asked him, he said, uh, well, we're confident that, that final property, we'll have the paperwork signed and done. And he said, you know, we could be ready to advertise by April 18th. Still waiting final approval from Endop. Confident we can move forward while we wait for approval. Then we want three weeks for the bid. So anyway, after talking multiple emails with, with Brian today, you know, he, he said, you know, it looks like we could advertise a week of 4/18. Bid's being due on 5/9.
So I sent my email out to his attorney March 31st.
Okay.
What's that, five days? But most of those are weekend days. So.
Right, right.
So, I mean, I won't be alarmed unless you can hear back from him this week. Then I'll be alarmed because usually he responds fairly timely.
Well, so we could still go ahead and plan on advertising a week of 4/18.
We'll have another bid before then.
Yeah.
We, we, we have, the bids we do 5/9 at noon here. And then there's this pre-bid meeting event that they would host, which he recommended on 4/28 at the town hall here at 10 AM. I've got, I've got all this in there. That's something he sent back. And then he, he talked about the, as far as sending out the bid packets. They use Eastern Engineering, I believe is the name in here, and they don't charge us. They charge the actual people that get the bid information. So yeah, I thought it'd be important to try to get some numbers nailed down tonight because if we don't, well, two weeks later and then we're pushing. and then we're pushing it back two weeks there. So, what did I leave out? Okay, here, here's this, Brandy, this is the insert the legal advertisement, four twenty, four twenty-seven. Uh, this is the advertisement for bid, blah, 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 May eighth at the town board, uh, it'll be open publicly. Here's a question I have for the board. Now, we don't meet again in May, the bids are due the eighth. We meet on five two, I think, and then we meet again on five nineteen or sixteen? Yeah, five sixteen. Do we want to try to have a meeting that Monday in between those two to get the darn bids open and keep this project moving as fast as we can? I mean, we want to put it off two weeks, we want to go ahead and try to meet and get it done?
I'd rather have a, a meeting, emergency meeting, whatever, whatever you want to call it.
Is that the same night as our park board?
Yeah.
Five.
We could do it earlier.
Yeah, I, I agree with David, I'd like to keep the thing going. Uh, you know, there's gonna be all kinds of communities, municipalities out there trying to get bids and, and, uh, we want to get in the, the, the pool as quick as possible. Okay, so here's this thing, Nick, advertising for bids.
Anticipation is we'll have signature prior to that, I think, is what they're anticipating.
Yes.
Or does that say, when's that say it published?
No. If we get them five nine, what do they do? Five nine, I'm losing track. Okay, bids due, so, well, that's a good point, Cindy.
We always let an engineer look over the bids to make sure that there's no.
We'll probably need to take the time, well, yeah, you want to take the time.
Because you didn't talk about an award date, I don't know if that's in your advertisement or if it's on go.
I don't know, is there an award date in there anywhere, Nick? What you got for five sixteen?
This is, question would be written writing for May sixth. All right, uh, and then we'll be publicly open, read aloud at May sixteenth. Any bids received later in that time, date will be returned unopened, no conditional bids will be considered. It doesn't have an award date, it just has bid opening on May sixteenth.
And then they've got a review on.
Well, okay.
Did you say bids received by town on five nine?
Yes, five nine at noon.
Okay, and then they'll be opened if.
It, it needs to say Friday, May ninth, not May eighth.
Friday's the sixth.
Okay, well, he said, change anything, we can change.
All right, so the dates are off, it sounds like then.
Who's looking at the wrong month?
It's probably last year.
So what we need to change?
So Friday, May sixth, and then the next one would be Friday, May thirteenth. All right, correct dates.
What are those two dates for? I'm lost again.
The first one would be the public meeting. Now, the first one would be received by, would be May sixth, and then read aloud a public meeting would be May thirteenth.
Oh, well, we could change it to five nine at noon, I, I mean, that's what.
Five six.
Well, he, he, we can change those dates.
Well, five nine.
You said five nine, I didn't, what's what they were doing.
Oh, that'd be Monday, okay.
That was three weeks, that was three weeks from advertising, five nine.
So those dates would need changed, yeah.
But, but.
Monday, then ninth, then Monday, the. Sixteen.
Monday, the ninth, Monday, the sixteen.
Which is our regular meeting.
But Cindy's point was, we need engineers to review the contract.
As long as it doesn't have an award by date, that's all I was worried about.
No, there's no award by date.
Uh, if, if, if we need.
It's unusual, but.
Right.
If we need engineers, which we will want the engineers to review, but we just like to pay at the parking lot over there. We opened the bids, we, we, uh, had the engineer look at them.
Which he looked at pretty quick.
And awarded.
And then we awarded. So if we opened on five nine, we could get the bids to Brian, the engineer, whoever they were.
You're opening on five thirteen.
Well, no, we, we can change those dates.
Sixteen.
But you have to give them time from the notice date to get the bids to you to be able to open the bids.
Right.
If you're not sending the bids out till four twenty.
Well, no, we're sending them, whoa, 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 whoa. Or if advertising four eighteen, we're having a pre-bid meeting on four twenty. For, uh.
And if you move it up anymore, you.
Who's having a pre-bid meeting?
They're getting like ten days to.
The engineers.
Bid on it.
I'm sorry.
If you move it up anymore than you have, you're getting like ten days to bid on it.
Yeah.
From the date they receive it.
I thought they needed three weeks.
We have to advertise, three weeks, we can't open them from.
But you're starting on April eighteenth and then you're gonna have a meeting on May sixth, is what you were saying.
Well, I know, the dates he's gotten there may be a little off. He said, we can change those to whatever we need, we need three weeks for advertising, right?
May sixth does not give us that.
So we advertise at four eighteen, well, let him get out a calendar and figure it out, sister.
Four twenty-five.
I forgot my phone.
Five one.
Did you say four eighteen?
Four eighteen we advertise, okay. So we got three weeks, one, two.
Four twenty-five.
Five nine.
Two, so five nine.
So five nine, so they would be due on five nine, say at noon here.
Sure.
And we could open them that night, right?
You could, well, no, well, that's not what you say you're gonna do. You're saying you're gonna open them on the sixteenth.
Well, that's what he has, I'm saying, does, does the board want to open them that night?
Yeah, you could have them due and open the same day, that's fine, we've done that before.
And then, then have the engineer look at them in the next week, on our next meeting. On the sixteenth, we select based on engineer's recommendations.
Well, you, you don't have to indicate when you're gonna select though.
We don't have to, but.
It doesn't have, but, I mean, maybe the reason why the sixteenth is because you normally wouldn't meet on the ninth.
Right.
You have them due then, which. You could have them due the sixteenth and open on the sixteenth if you wanted to have.
But this way, if they look at it the week before, and we can wait, take action on the sixteenth.
Yeah.
The engineers would have time to look at it, some of the time they're open till our meeting.
That's what I'm trying to do here, cut a couple of weeks off.
I'd rather have Roger. But I don't know, I mean, that's up to you guys.
What's that?
Is Roger here?
No, 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 Stretchpoint, yeah, this is Stretchpoint's job. Yeah, this is, this is on them. That's all you think, Nick?
I don't care.
Well, as long as we're in compliance.
Due and open on the ninth.
Due, we'll have them do and open on the ninth. And we'll, we'll, uh, have the engineer to.
Ninth.
So are we gonna, are we gonna, they're gonna be due on, at noon, but when are we gonna open them?
That night.
Five.
So we're having a special meeting?
Well, I guess.
Okay.
We'll make it special.
Okay, well, anyway, I am.
Doesn't sound special.
At five o'clock.
Well, you can have them due and opened on the sixteenth, cause you're already meeting that night.
I know, but that takes another week.
But then the engineers won't have had time to look at that.
So that means engineers have to take them another week or so to look at.
Well, from structure point, it probably won't.
Well, if they're due and open the same day, then you have your period of time after that day for the engineers to review them, make sure they're compliant and making recommendations.
There's an element of haste involved, we'd love to move this along.
When you know what happens when you hurry.
Haste makes waste.
Trouble.
But that's why we're giving the engineers a whole week.
That's why this has been like a six-year project.
Something you really think their engineers are gonna be able to review them, get them done and.
Oh, yeah.
Are they able, yes, will they?
Do they care?
We'll see.
Well, we'll put, you know, they're, they're responsible for this project and if we ask them to do it, by God, they better do it.
I guess my point would be, what difference does seven days make?
I think we're, we're the points of this.
Do what?
You're gonna have a five-minute hearing on May ninth, what difference does seven days make?
I don't know, I don't know.
If you do it on the sixteenth, that gives them almost a month to submit their bids. From the first day you publish the notice.
Okay, okay.
To when you open them, and then.
But, the longer we wait, people will already have projects lined up.
Well, that's the other concern, you know, everybody's bidding projects.
But you're still publishing the same day regardless of when you make your.
Well, true, so they know this project may be in their schedule, project.
So if they're gonna bid it, they're gonna bid it, you're not changing it.
They could withdraw their bid if they get awarded somewhere else, that's why I was worried about the award date.
Okay, well, I won't be here in the morning, how about that?
Well.
That will be an unexcused absence.
Well, you know, I mean, I, I, I.
We're gonna have to have a discussion about expectations.
Well, I guess the thing is, Nick.
And special meetings and executive sessions and.
If we have them on the sixteenth, we open, engineers will have to review before we can accept.
Anyway.
So, our next meeting won't be until June, if we wait till our next regular meeting, that's June six.
You could just move your regular meeting up to the ninth and cancel the sixteenth.
We could.
Meet two weeks in a row?
This is gonna be complicated.
I know, I know, we need a big whiteboard.
Let it be like, oh, I guess, and then we're adding the twenty-fifth of March, or April two.
Okay, where are we at, kids? What we're doing? Who's on first?
So you wanna meet May ninth?
Well, I'm just thinking, as soon as we get it done.
Right, although normally you open bids.
Actually, statutorily, I'm required to be here.
Oh, darn it, but we like to see it, Nick.
Could you just move your regular meeting to the ninth from the sixteenth? And then I'll rearrange what I have going on to the sixteenth from the ninth. You could do that, yeah, also.
Well, I could be available on the ninth.
If you don't do it at six o'clock, that takes my conflict away.
I can be there.
I can be here at noon when they're due, on the ninth. Steve, think you can be here? Cause that gives us three of, that way we can just get, get, get them to the engineers, they can review them, that way we can make a decision on the sixteen.
All right, so you're doing both on May ninth.
Save a couple of weeks.
May ninth and noon, is that what you say?
Yes.
That takes my conflict away and we're fine then. And we're gonna open on May ninth. That works fine.
For now.
Can somebody type this up and send it out?
So they're gonna, we'll give them to Structure Point, or, you, 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 then we will make a decision on the sixteenth.
Right, yeah, that's what needs to be. Well, you can't do anything if we don't have a signature.
So you're going to?
I'm calling Gooch, I'm, or.
His attorney.
His attorney.
Explain to him, yeah.
Yeah, what happens if he doesn't sign?
You can't do this, cause you don't own that. At least I'd advise you not to proceed forward, just.
Right, well, I don't know what you need to do to get them to, uh.
I'll email them again right now, but I'll call them tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, I thought we could tie some stipulations.
We did.
We did, and they verbally.
They verbally, but the.
It's just the documents came later from Structure Point directly to them.
Well, again, Structure Point's not the one that's doing it, it's their contracted firm.
Right, but Structure Point is whoever sent the documents to the attorney though, I think. I think Brian Hood indicated an email to me that they'd sent the documents. And so my email to the attorney was, we've sent the documents, we haven't heard back, please advise, we want to proceed forward.
Well, I will let Brian know my concern, our concern, and you let the, his attorney know your concern, and everybody's gonna be concerned. There you go.
About, sorry, South Market, Jeff.
South Market.
Changing topics, sorry.
Well, I mean, we're beating this for best.
Oh, we are, we are.
Yeah, if somebody could just type out all the dates and everything for me.
Me too. Schedule.
Yep, uh, South Market, we did get all the POs from Endop for right-of-way services. Uh, we got everything signed, we had a notice to proceed, sent to Structure Point. And Ken Olson also sent a separate email on, uh, South Market update. I think I forwarded that to you, progress report.
You did.
With all the target dates and stuff, so we're rolling. According to Ken, they're getting close to be able to do, um,
Bid add for.
Utility coordination with, uh, some groups. So I know that's been a concern too, but I think he's got all the markups from Cody and our guys they need. So it'll just be getting with, uh, gas and moving down all those people at some point in time. Jefferson Project, we're on track for a five sixteen bid opening and award.
That will be at our meeting, correct?
Correct.
Now, did everybody get that final draft of the parking, you know, that's something we need to, I think, formally approve.
Yes, yeah, but, yeah. Option one or option two.
Yeah.
We changed, yeah, we changed it, we're gonna do angle parking on the east side all the way from thirty-six to, to York. I mean, with the bump outs. On the west side of the road, we're gonna do parallel parking and carry it all the way through. I did kind of screw up when I talked to the engineer about this. I did talk to him again and explain to him that I had him move a, an entrance. And it, I thought it was entering, would be entering our new parking lot, and I said, we can't have that. So he moved, he moved the banks, uh, opening. So I told him, we'll just have to move that right, I mean, put it back where it was at, which is not a big deal.
Cause we're not having an opening off of Jefferson.
No, no.
It's gonna be mine, that's what I thought.
Okay, so.
That'll add, what, how many?
Have you seen that?
Three or four.
Okay.
Five.
But I mean, totally on that street, it'll add.
Like nineteen.
Twenty.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Final's nineteen. Uh, and it looks like he's got, he says two ADA, but it looks like there's three of these blue spots indicate the ADA parking.
I thought there were gonna be two on the west side and one on the east.
Well, I don't know, he's got three there, I'm not, he can put them wherever you want. You have to have at least two, there are twenty-five spots.
I think we oughta have one over on this side, that was the only thing, that was why I liked.
That'd be good to have one over there, it's cause of the ramp. But, uh, so we need.
I think we're gonna have two in our new parking lot.
There'll be at least two there, cause of laws, yeah, statute, uh, I'm making a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this is the revised option, not one or two, it's the revised.
Yeah.
And if you need to talk to somebody, I've got the number, Ken's on vacation.
Yeah.
Wing, winging out.
Yeah, cause I think that's, you know, sent the, uh, the other thing on South Market, I forgot, is, uh, the pavement, uh, design. I went ahead and sent that in as a free, uh, cause it, that's just engineering detail on thickness of pavement, that kind of stuff.
That was painful reading.
It was hard, you had to get a magnifying glass out to see, okay, what's that say?
So did that as well. All right, Water Extension East Project, uh, advocate, uh, Cindy, is there anything I need to do on that?
No, I think we've kind of slowed down a bit for now.
Okay.
I mean, as far as what I'm doing.
Okay.
You skipped Jackson Voorhees, if it matters, yeah.
Yeah, we have a meeting, the Storm Board Board has that meeting, four twenty, uh, we expanded the scope of that, yeah. So they wanted to meet again, apparently, and talk about that.
Yeah, one thing was brought up at that meeting, I can't remember if I mentioned it last time, it's, uh, they did have concerns about, uh, sewer down through there. And, um, obviously sewer would be outside the scope of the storm board. Uh, if you, I think I have Structure Point's, uh.
Video?
Videos and stuff of all the storm down through Jackson Voorhees. And I don't think that when we did the sewer, uh, project, improvement project, that anything was identified as critical down through there. But that's not to say that there aren't issues.
Well.
It's just at that time, we, we didn't choose any of those for CIP.
I, I don't know where the original documents are from the lab, we did two or three years, a lot of videos with Structure, well, they contracted out, Structure Point was engineering. But, uh, videoed it, and we did some CIP, I scored, we did some on one of those two streets. But those original documents, it shows back fourteen, fifteen, I don't know exactly, maybe thirteen when we did all that. It's probably something in there about those two streets we could find.
Uh, yeah, I think I have those.
I just swore we did some on one of those streets.
So I mean, if it's, if it's something that we want Roger to review, uh, as far as maybe looking at that, you got, just, just need to tell me and I'll get with him and see if he wants to do a, uh, a work order or whatever.
Where'd he go on that question?
Florida, I think.
Well, we have the data, we can review it ourself, I guess, is what I'm saying, Jeff, I mean, we have it down there. When you say review, what are you thinking?
Take a look at, decide what needs. Take a look at, and decide what needs...
Well, take a look at actually video on the pipe, or what?
Yeah.
Well...
I mean, we've, we've got the data, it's just...
Yes, we have the data, I think. It's, just needs to be reviewed.
Plus, it's not current, and I can't imagine it has improved.
Well, no, I know it's not improved, but, uh, yeah, again, we need to start with what we have. Uh, if he wants to review it, that's fine. Uh, or we need to, how far is our video going? I mean, our, our machine, yeah.
Now, we, we could get a manhole to manhole easily.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, that's another option. Well, anyway, I guess four twenty, we'll, we'll try to... Uh, when's Roger get back?
Uh, I think he's back this week. He's back, because I got an email from him.
Well, alright, we'll touch base with him and see, uh, what he's willing to get involved with. Again, that's another change of scope, but, uh, that's our...
And it'd be a change of scope through our end.
Yeah.
An additional reporter on our end, but, uh, I'll talk to him about it, and we'll see what we think will bring your recommendation.
Okay.
Jackson Voorhees, alright, so, Water Extension East, we talked about that. Good on that. Charging station information. EMA did put on a nice little informative, uh, thing for us at thirty-six last week, and...
Give one to Nick.
Yeah, give one to Nick.
I still got mine.
Lydia and Steve were, Lydia and Harper were able to attend. And, um, it, it sounds like this is gonna be pretty affordable. Uh, going through the information, I think that the, the initial kind of thought was that we could put one down at the, um, we put a level-two charging station at our new parking lot, and a level-two, uh, station at the depot fairly easily. And we thought the best option was to lease them. I can't remember the price on that.
Twenty-four hundred dollars a year.
Twenty-four hundred dollars a year.
And it charges two cars. One station charges two cars.
So that would give us four charging stations in town, and, uh, we would not be responsible for maintenance, software updates.
Bandolism, nothing.
Nothing.
All covered.
They own it, we lease it.
It's called ChargePoint.
ChargePoint. And actually, I thought it was a totally good deal. Uh, there is an RFP out there from NDOT, the federal government, that just came out. I haven't had a chance to review it. But it also is, uh, providing grant, grant dollars for charging stations, and I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I, I read through this some, and actually followed some of the links late this afternoon, Jeff, and, yeah, a couple of years, maybe. Uh, you know, right now, they're doing an RFI request for information. Uh, they don't know what they're doing either. Interstates have the first priority, and so we're just kinda...
I got that. They're gonna target different places.
So, yeah.
And honestly, with all the, not to knock the state or anything with their grant process, especially them with federal dollars, get to be very...
Yeah. It'll be a couple of years for this money, probably even be available, from what little bit I read, so I, it's probably not gonna help us...
Probably not gonna hit Rockville.
Yeah.
No.
Uh, you know what's neat...
For twenty-four hundred bucks a year, I think that's doable.
Well, it's really neat. Once you get these stations installed, there's maps out there that these electric car owners use, and so they know, "I can go this far at this point." That's why EMA was telling us up at Casey's in Beatersburg, they have a Tesla charger put in on the Tesla's cost, because they mapped it out between Indianapolis and Champaign. That's a spot that they needed to charge it, and so they put one in at Casey's.
I've seen those, I've seen a spot that that keeps it, yeah.
So those things are important for people to drive these types of cars. You know, I, I see them in town every day anymore. You, you see these darned Teslas around and other vehicles, uh, so I think it would be used.
So have you put a cost together on our end to get...
Well, they got it estimated here.
Yeah, you're, you're talking really just us doing trenching and, uh, I, I think EMA was wanting to do, charge us some engineering fee and some things.
Oh, yeah.
I think installation, I think we can do all that.
They, they said it sounded, I mean, the, the guy, the one guy that was there first, he made it sound like it's pretty easy.
You pour a concrete pad, you run your conduit, come down off a pole. The pole's right there in that north, or I'm sorry, south.
West of that lot, yeah. Uh...
Park suggested too, which I think is a good idea, moving forward. At some point, maybe put one down at the park, too.
Well, yeah, that'd be another location. You possibly have a need for one. Uh, but, yeah, I think we can cut their installation costs here significantly, Jeff.
I think so too.
So, uh, well, we don't have a lot anywhere near, but it's something to keep, uh, keep fresh in our minds, I guess, to...
You guys say when, and I'll do it.
Well...
Once we get things designed and moving forward with that, I'd say pull the trigger. And what, did they say, did they say there was about a twenty-week lead time?
Is that what it was, twenty weeks?
I think so.
So we're looking at, uh...
So would you guys be interested in putting one at the depot now?
Well, okay, that's an interesting point. We could do one at the depot this summer, and, and the lot would be next summer. Good point, Dave. Uh, what do you think, Jeff?
I think we can do them both this year.
With a lot? I don't think we're gonna do it to a lot till we get the final, figure out exactly what we're doing.
Well, I thought Roger kind of had the final design for the lot.
Well, I'm not sure. We have, we have a rough idea, but there's some debate about what's, if anything, in the center, the green space. Back to you, Jeff. Think we could get one at the depot this year?
I think we could.
Well...
And if it's gonna be twenty weeks, we probably oughta...
We should probably say, "Okay, let's start today." Uh...
Do we want to pay EMA two thousand bucks for, for engineering? I think we're wise to do that.
I don't know. I don't, I'm thinking, yes, uh, you know, let's try to work with them and, and cut our costs. We have our own ability to trench, don't we?
We can trench, we can run the, the, uh...
Con...
We, we can actually do everything as far as the installation.
Is that an engineering fee or an installation fee?
No, they have, did you look at your breakdown?
Yeah, I looked at...
They have an engineering fee of two thousand dollars, and that's an estimated cost, but we may not, they might not even charge us that if we're gonna do all the installation.
Well, why don't, I mean, we wanna vote on it.
I don't know that you want to, no, until I give the ChargePoint.
Well, we're not voting on doing the whole menu of things, but just basically give you authority to go ahead, tell them, "We wanna do this down there, and we'll work out the cost."
Okay.
I mean, that charging station takes a few hours to get the vehicle to eighty percent.
Well, it depends on the level of charge at the time.
They said this one was about an hour and a half, is that what they said?
That's a three.
It varies. Level three is the quickest.
Well, then it was forty-five minutes, I think. It was...
Level two, I thought, was four hours.
So how long is somebody gonna park at the depot?
Well, if you're bad or dead, you're gonna...
You don't park...
If you're running out of juice, you've gotta, it's not like you can shop.
True.
And does the four hours give them a full charge? Because they said they're actually better if they operate at eighty percent.
I mean, how many people go to the depot and stay for four hours?
Well, I guess they'd have to go walk around and...
You know, with the festival coming, I can see maybe some people coming to town and...
They said, I mean, people look to see, when you're driving one of those, you look to see where your closest truck is.
I don't know. That might plan your activities a little better if there's a destination, something to do with you got, other than setting your car down.
Well, right, I mean, it's, sidewalk's not great, but we, you know, a quick hop up the street, and you're in a booming downtown Rockville, where we never sleep. Some.
Till after, till after eight.
I go to bed.
Well, the streets get rolled up at some point.
And the lights are going on and yellow.
I'm sorry.
I came back from my airport, and my kids were asking why the lights were blinking.
Uh-huh. Um, get dropped off.
You guys want me to go ahead and look into, and pursue this more in getting one installed at the depot this year?
I think so.
That's your primary spot this year's?
This year, we'll learn from it and, uh, be ready for any, uh, uh, issues that might come up during that project for next year's at the parking lot.
Okay, we can do that.
Uh...
I'll try to get some things up, prepare for next one. Beechwood Park Cool House is still pending.
What's the deal with the roof down there, by the way? I mean, do we have damage?
On the, yeah, it, it's been damaged for...
Since last, last year.
Oh, dear.
It's been a long time.
Thing is, our, our carrier just started this year, though, does that...
No, we were able to get the plane from the...
So I've okayed Blue Eye Fisher to, uh, start on that with his quote, and he's gonna get materials, and he's going to, uh, try to get that done by Memorial Day, so we can open.
It'll be done three days after he starts.
Yeah, very well made. Uh, UMAC, um, waiting on some materials. I talked to Ronnie Junior the other day, and, uh, Benjamin's a matter of fact. So there, we're still on their books. No change on the clarifier project or the blower project. I don't know, Bruce, if you guys have, uh...
Yeah, I believe.
Okay. I, they haven't given me any more numbers on the blower resizing. We're prepared the Beechwood Park Cool House. I just mentioned that, uh... Did you talk about that twice?
No, you were talking about the renovation, which is pending.
Beechwood Park Cool House renovation.
Till we re-advertise.
Yeah, we're gonna do that in August. And then lights crossarms, Brett has ordered the crossarms and braces to repair that, and the fall fields. I texted Zach Clapp here earlier about the drainage. And Zach says, "I think we're going to hold off now. We waited too long, so no worries on it. Thanks for checking." So, okay. We'll table that till next time. And then I, still waiting on some guys, give me some estimates on painting of the, uh, park. Very back page, uh, park board. We'll talk more about replacing a few of the lights in Beechwood Park. And also, as a side note, I had a phone call from a lady, I want to say it was early last week, that she was wanting contact information for New Hope. I really didn't have anything to hand to her. She said she, she tried the, uh, I think one of the advertised numbers and didn't get through to anybody, so I emailed Gordon. He said he would have the local manager, you know, contact me, but I still haven't heard anything from him, so...
We have all that information here.
Okay. You wouldn't mind sharing, uh, some of that?
No, and you can just have it. We get calls all the time about that.
Okay, so refer them to you.
I reached out to New Hope, um, well, to...
Aaron.
Yeah, to their actual, um, they sent me Anthony and another lady's contact number, and people have been able to get ahold of them successfully, so...
So, refer, if I get any calls like that on my phone, just refer them to you. Okay, cool. That's all.
You think, Jeff? Yeah. That's all.
Okay, Randy. We only have two vests left to come in for body armor. Uh, those are for the two new staff members, and the prosecutor's gonna pay for those. The grant application that was submitted to Matt Repon Pipeline, we haven't had any update from them. The body camera grant has been approved, so we received twenty-four hundred dollars from the State of Indiana. Uh, for that grant, uh, that's got a six hundred dollar match for us, so we can buy additional, uh, six cameras and just keep them to replace existing cameras if one of them breaks. So we don't have to buy additional licenses for those cameras for the software. Uh, New Hope has been doing a required four-hour pre-basic training, should be finished up this week. Uh, we now have three police chaplains, uh, Gary Jones from Rockville Baptist Church, Keith McIntyre from Monzum Independent Baptist, and Mark Obenagel from Emmanuel Southern Baptist Church there at Midway. All three received their training, uh, from International Association of Police Chaplains, and they did that on their own, paid for on their own, and had been working with the officers and, and the community in the office. Uh, Gary Jones came up with this pamphlet, uh, that we can give to people, gives them resources when we have, uh, deaths that we're dealing with, death investigations, just about any kind of death. So those guys have, have, uh, everything they do for us is free. They, they worked in the office remodeling and painting the inside and putting the flooring in, so they did that for us, too. Next, I'll go over the fee schedule from the Police Commission for you. Wanted to update you on a couple of things. Um, Officer Chris Fisher had a case, uh, a few months ago at the liquor store, an indecent exposure. The guy was arrested. And, um, it doesn't sound like much, but it was found out that he was on parole for, um, a violent rape that was prolonged. And, um, had a woman tied up for a long time, and this happened over in Richmond, Indiana. So we had to go to court and testify over there, and the guy ended up getting full fifteen years reinstated on his sentence. So he did a good job, too. Officer Cameron Martin has been compiling statistics, and I will share those with you guys as soon as I get, um... It's just something that interests me, and he started keeping records on, on his own, so as I get those, I'll share them with you and the Police Commission.
What is a J four service, Randy? I never can remember.
That's paper service, uh, serving papers, whether it's, yeah, serving papers for the court.
Okay.
That is, uh, that is by statute the sheriff's department's responsibility, but when, when I became chief, I told the sheriff that we would help do those in town, because it helps him out a little bit, but it also lets us know where people are at in town and what kind of things are going on around them.
Right.
So it's, it's good information from us, too. And I think that's it.
I got a question for you, Randy. Um, I was looking at our accounts payable register. We got two purchases of hand sanitizer, or seven sixty-seven, seventy-nine a piece.
Yeah, and that's a five hundred and ten dollar, uh, five hundred and ten bottles of spray hand sanitizer. And looking on their website, it's supposed to be two dollars and nineteen cents a bottle, and they charged me two ninety-nine. I called the county and complained about it. Um, and I haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay.
It was, uh, just something that has Rockville Police Department's name on it, their little pocket ones that we can stick on, guys can stick in their pockets and have with them all the time. But it's something we could also give out to the public or here in the office. So, well, we were overcharged.
Well, I guess my question is, do you feel like that was a, a good purchase? I mean...
Not now, no.
Well... I mean, I don't know where else to go with this. I, I mean, looking at it, I, I feel like, I don't feel like I'm gonna vote no to pay for this, so... Okay, I, I don't know what the rest of board, how they feel about it. I mean, that's a lot of money for little hand sanitizers. I, my, in my, the way I feel about it.
The two dollars is not bad. I don't think that the, the three dollars was a bit excessive, especially when I can see they, on their website, that's only two dollars a piece.
Well, I mean, I just don't feel like it was a good purchase, period. I just, I mean, I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to fix our budget issue that we have in the police department, and I don't think this is helping us. I, I mean, I don't know what else to say about it. I mean, I don't know if anybody else has an opinion on it, but, um... I, I mean, I feel...
Give me the bill back, I'll take care of it.
Well, I mean, it, no, we'll, I mean, it'll be a, we'll vote on it and see what everybody wants to do. I'm just, I, I mean, I just feel that's my opinion on this. Um, I mean, you know, Jeff, I mean, we just went through Jeff's stuff, and he always asks for board approval on his things. And I, I just feel like you need to start coming to the board and, and asking for approval before, before we make purchases. I, you know, I mean, other than your, your day-to-day operations stuff, gas, I mean, whatever else, you know, is a day-to-day thing, but, um... I know it's probably aggravates you, but that's just the way I feel about it.
Don't aggravate me at all.
Okay, well, I will...
It's one of those things that it's a, to give out to the public that, uh, I'll get it paid some other way.
Well, I, I mean, I understand what you're, what you're trying to do. I'm just, I mean, I, the situation we're in with the police department and, and the way things are right now, I just don't feel like that's... You know, I just don't feel like that's a good purchase, so, um, but I mean, all, somebody wants to make a motion, or, or we can wait till...
Well, not that, at that point.
Well, I mean...
Yeah, I think what David's saying, Randy, is it's just, you know...
Just give me back the bill, I'll take care of it.
Fifteen hundred on hand sanitizer, given other issues we have, it's just, it's concern to the board. Uh, so, yeah.
And the message was received. Give me back the bill, and I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Well, okay. I guess we'll move on.
Then you don't have an issue.
Till we get to that point, then, we'll, we'll see what everybody wants to do.
Okay, where are we at?
Well, I believe we're up to three, so we'll take care of this.
Okay, so my first, I am on, as I was on my plane, so I have planes to two oh four nine oh seven seventy-five.
Right.
Y'all have a copy of that register?
Yep, so I see we have on page four, we have, uh, it says, fuck, get this, final design on forty-one North Sewer.
Do we believe that?
So it says final. It says final. Uh, so, yeah, I, I take it for, for, take their word on that. Uh, so that, that's encouraging, I guess. Uh, we had a partial payment. Yeah, I believe, uh, Brandy, you asked a question, or that Rockville Properties, I believe that, that, that's not, that's, uh, not, uh...
Okay.
Scott, it is Scott Pat?
Rockville Properties.
Well, then that confuses me, because...
So I was like... They, they put it under, they put it under a different name when they bought the shop.
Well, why are we paying for right-of-way? I thought they were giving us right-of-way.
I haven't been involved in that.
Yeah, I thought part of the, I'm, part of the deal was tax and right-of-ways.
Yeah, that, that we, that we were gonna hook them up for free, because they were giving us right-of-way.
Granted, it's still cheaper than what that one company, what they sell for.
Okay, now, if we're paying for right-of-way, are we gonna charge you for the tax?
Yes.
Well, oh, dolly, yeah, it seems to me that would be...
Yeah, that would be fair, it sounds like.
Who built for the right-of-way? Where'd they build them in from the right-of-ways, at Structure Point, I assume?
It's from...
What page is that?
Well, who's it from? It's page six. It's page six, Rockville Pro, name of payee is Rockville Properties, I don't see.
That's why I was just asking how that originated.
Well, yeah, let's take a look at some originating documents here.
So, Rockville, Rockville Zell, or something.
I assume there was some kind of bill that came in.
Oh, I'm sure there is.
No, I understand that. Before that gets created, there's gotta be some other paper trail that came in.
Well, and there's another one, I'm not voting to say.
Didn't you guys have an agreement of the?
That was.
Well, I, my understanding of that is who that is, she says it's Scott Pat, I thought it might have been another property owner out there.
Cause we talked to Nathan.
Yeah.
And I have that.
And it was like, okay, you know.
Well, maybe the, the clearinghouse company for right-of-ways didn't get the communication, but I don't know, I, I don't.
Was it, how long has it been listed as Rockville Properties? I mean, was, was that initial loan with the?
I guess they figured out that that's more than it would cost them for the tax, so they're coming out.
There might not have been any figure in on it. We didn't communicate with the right-of-way clearing company, and they just.
So can we just table that until we have some communication?
Well, we could.
That would be my recommendation.
Well, he was very agreeable with the, yes, right-of-ways, and that's what we'll do, I mean, is that your motion?
Yes.
Hold on a second.
Okay, so we're tabling the payments.
So what page are we on?
Six.
Six, to Rockville Properties, the 81 home, or 81 home.
Mm-hmm. Who wants to contact who here?
It would be Nathan.
You got Nathan on speed dial?
Yeah, I was kinda about to refund the negotiating on that, so I'm not sure.
Well, David, do you wanna talk to Nathan?
Yeah, I can call him.
Cause haven't you had a couple, I've had a conversation with him before, and I think we've talked to him.
And for my end, we'll, we'll do whatever you guys want us to do, but I've got, whatever, I mean, that's not a problem, all right? You gotta let me know.
Well, yeah, we just need to find out what, there's a.
That was, that has been the, the two on there, that and Gooch, have been the two on all of the emails that have gone out. Those are the two that were on there that we hadn't cleared up or paid for yet, so that's why they sent the paperwork, I just got it Friday.
Well, you did your job, you processed it, by gosh, you got to pay, but we're, yai, 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 yai.
Yeah, I understand the situation.
I think we were.
Yeah, they're showing us Shopko, like the, the part there at Shopko, I mean, I don't know who Rockville Properties is, but that's the area that this check is designed for, is the easy across that line.
Well, so Dave, you're gonna contact someone out there and see what's going on.
There was three parcels across there, so I wonder.
I must say, I'm really happy with the way they cleaned up the, the retaining pond, I guess you'd call it, used to be a bunch of bamboo growing there or something, out there in Shopko. I think it was bamboo, I think. Just weed, yeah, it does, South, South Preston Road.
Bamboo?
There's a bamboo, a lot of bamboo out there, there is.
Weeds.
No, it is bamboo.
Cattails.
Cattails.
No, I'll go take a picture.
Bamboo does not grow in Indiana.
We'll bring a piece in, so we can see.
I have some Alabama bamboo.
I'm telling you, it's bamboo out there, and so. Somebody help me here, help.
Make a picture for a lot of it.
I, I remember when I was a kid, it's every, we called reeds.
Well, the reeds, yeah, I'm gonna be down that road Wednesday, like, I remember, I'll stop and take a picture.
Expect to see that.
Put it on your calendar.
Okay.
Okay, so so far, is, is there anything else?
No, so, so we, so we tabled that, right? Okay. What else you got? Last page, so the last page is those expenses that David was referring to, the hand sanitizer stuff. What was it, Brandy, two, two, two separate bills?
There's two invoices, they invoiced it on two invoices at 786-79.
Okay.
Well, that's quite a difference from 19 to 99, and that, as many as he bought, so.
Well, it'll be about $500 difference of a buck a bottle, or, I think it's a little less than a buck a bottle, he sends a bottle.
219 or 299.
That's like $1,572 for 510. You might have one of those with you?
I did, did I take mine with me to the night, or did I leave it here?
I didn't see it, but.
You took it back, you didn't wanna share.
I don't know if I put it in my purse.
It was about the, Dave?
Yeah.
About the size of a pencil.
Yeah.
Yeah, about the gold part on every cell.
I mean, it's split in half, see?
Yeah, right.
Just wanted one for visual reference, but that's okay. Well, what do you folks wanna do about that? I, I guess, you know, I'm looking at this bill thinking, in light of the non-payroll public spend situation, public safety, we, we, it's, it's just not appropriate expense. I'm adding my thoughts on it, and, and, good lord, everything's going up, we're already over budget, non-payroll.
We're over budget at this time of the year?
The budget submitted was over budget to begin with, I mean, it's, it's what they submitted, I mean, the, the, what? Yeah, yeah. Any comments?
I mean, I, everybody knows how I feel about it, I, you know, if somebody wants to make a motion, and, I mean, we'll, we'll vote it out, I don't, I mean, I don't.
Well, it's an expense that probably didn't really need to happen.
Well, okay, on that, I just got my train of thought again, I'm getting older, I lose stuff. The point I was going, what are you, where I was going is, we have been told, it's our fault, we approve. And here it is, kids, we approve it or not?
I didn't think we were going to approve it.
Well, that's what, what we're, we're talking about, I, I.
I mean.
We have to step up here, it's okay.
We bought vests in January that we didn't think we were gonna have.
They were not even in the budget, but we had to do that.
So.
Legal counsel's strong, counsel's strongly, we should do that.
Yeah, this, this is very much more discretionary than it was.
Well, it is, it is. But yeah, we, we, any other point taken, I, I appreciate the fact, well, we approve it, so yes, we have some blame, we're culpable, and, and, we have to step up and say, okay, we've gotta quit approving these, these kinds of expenses.
But if you notice, these expenses come in after the fact, not before.
Yes.
Well, that's.
And then David addressed that, I believe, and you saying.
I mean, I think, I think we need to vote that, I mean, we need to.
Approve.
Approve, have approved spending on everything. Even, I, I mean, cleaning supplies, office supplies, Brandy can take care of that, so if, if, I mean, I wish Brandy would have stayed, so, I, cause I hate to do this. I mean, I'd rather be doing it to his face, I mean, so he understands it, but, I mean, any kind of, as far as I'm concerned, office supplies, cleaning supplies, PPE, I mean, I don't, I, you know, whatever you guys can think of, I mean, Brandy can take care of that stuff.
Which he does for the other departments.
Yeah, I mean.
And it won't really come out of his numbers, will it?
No.
So that's just a benefit for him, I would think.
It's just a matter of dropping her a note, or an email, or a text.
Well, every department should, or, I would think, would have some sort of inventory, right, Jeff? And, you know, gee, we need to order some more of this stuff.
Yeah, if I need, like, paper towels, and toilet paper, and supplies, and things like that, I'll call Brandy, maybe you should.
Where do you buy your stuff at for that, like that?
Well, the, the Sam's has the best price, so we can order with them, and if our apartment places an order twice a year.
As far as operating budget goes, and, and the other things, though, you know, I mean, if it's over the, the $2,500 threshold, I'd generally bring that to you guys.
Right, right. Well, anyway, backtrack, uh.
I, I mean, and to that end, I, I feel, and I'll make the motion that I feel like we need to revoke Brandy's pending privileges, and everything that he buys comes to this board for approval. That's the motion, so if you want to second and vote on it, that's fine, if you don't, then you can leave me at it, either way.
Yeah, I'll second that, this is something we need to get a handle on, maybe re-release that later on when things get settled down and the budget gets under control.
I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
So hey, speaking of public, what?
Can, um, can I just clear up the claims, though, that is a separate subject, so.
Motion made to approve claims accepting the Rockville Properties payment of 8, 8100 and the pain, the two invoices for hand sanitizer.
Invoices are IRP promos LLC.
Um, if I make a motion to remove those, both from my claims that I submitted, right?
That's what I understand.
That new total I have figured for claims comes to 195, 234, 17. And what I, I will need to do, I'll, I'll document that, that's the motion, I will, um, I'll make it on here, I'll probably have another copy, just the original copy for you to sign, but I'll have to get this signed with my adjustment on there tonight, if that's okay.
So.
Could you second the motion?
I'll second. You second?
I'll second.
She seconded.
Now, what, what do we, what, what, what's in this?
Everything except the property payment and the sanitizer.
Yeah, we're gonna find out about this.
We're gonna find out about the property thing, you're gonna, you're gonna make contact with that. Good.
All favor?
So hey, how about public safety? I just saw on the news today that town did receive the ladder truck from Crawfordsville. Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, we received.
They were like retiring it.
No, I must have been on vacation.
They gave it to us.
A few weeks back.
I just leave and everything happens.
Well, did you know we were potentially going to get it?
It's great news.
I, I didn't know.
Okay, well, a few weeks back, Josh contacted, I don't know, I remember talking to Josh somewhere.
Or he came to my.
And, and I think he came by the mall, in fact, one day, to me, and he said, you know, we have an opportunity, they have this fire truck, ladder truck in Crawfordsville, if they can't get it sold by X date, they're going to donate it to us. They dropped the price from 200 down to, I think, 90, and, and, and they didn't sell, and.
$200 down to 90?
200 dollars.
Oh, okay.
Down to 90, and I, I'm not, those are. My memory, my memory may not be quite right, but I believe those were the numbers roughly. And, and so, gosh, it didn't sell, they got their new truck, they need to do something with it, and so they, they donated to the town of Rockville.
So that must have been the one I saw, that, there's one that came through and they kinda sounded off there.
Yeah.
Coming in or whatever, and I was wondering what was going on, but.
Of course, my first question, do we have a place to keep it, can we get it in the building?
Uh, I think he said, it's tired.
You know, what, what a great, great.
Something else to add to that, though, that, that truck has been inspected, and it's good until 2026, so.
Well, another concern I have, I'm sure it's gonna require a little training. I mean, I don't know if you've ever seen it, it's a mad, 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 mad world from 1962, but when they all go up the ladder truck, on the ladder.
It's a classic.
It's a classic.
Don't we have a ladder truck now?
No, we have nothing.
That's what they always wanted.
So it took really long.
I saw it come in, but I just, I didn't know what was going on there.
Lots of backstory on it, thank Crawfordsville, we should send them a gift basket or fruit basket or something.
Park County.
The pizza.
A pizza.
Pizza, maple syrup.
A taste of Park County.
Yes.
Uh, but wow, what a nice thing.
No, that is awesome.
I wanna throw this out there with the ladder truck too, maybe we can look into a garrison flag, or an extremely large flag that we can put on that truck during 4th of July.
How that'd be neat.
Or there, or what, whenever they'd like to do it.
Okay. So yeah, shout out to Josh from the fire department, and Steve, and what's his name?
Jim. Warren's having a second-story structure fire, man.
Yeah, yeah, so that's.
Fight your tongue.
Rare to get that kind of good news.
I buried my alibi.
Okay.
Okay. Got that all figured out. Okay, the next thing is utility adjustment from IMPA. There was an electric fuel adjustment error on utility bills that's been assessed, that did result in an overcharge, so I'm working with Bev Matthews from IMPA on getting those adjustments made. Waiting to hear back from her, if we can just go ahead and maybe June or July's billing, go ahead and get all those adjustments applied back, so you may see that. I'm sure I'll have more information on that, or maybe some updated information, um, the next meeting, but she would like for me to document in minutes and get an approval if you guys are all on board to just go ahead and make those adjustments on one bill instead of spreading it out amongst every quarter, that tracking factor is changed.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, okay, original, okay, so we got motion, I got all, all the shit up.
All favor?
Is that all it takes?
You know, there was a couple of attorney presented, I think that's probably the best way to go, definitely, uh, yeah.
I think it's the cleanest.
It's cleanest. Just be a one-time credit.
Is there, is there an estimate?
If, um.
I don't know yet.
I mean, on a, on a 500 kilowatt average, it's $5, makes a change. But if we can just do a whole adjustment one time instead of spreading that out, it makes more sense to go ahead and get that applied.
Be a lot easier to do it and get it over there.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so.
Right-of-way.
Oh, right-of-ways for Bloomingdale Utilities. So Ronda approached me, let me, you will remember, or somebody that's been around for, will remember about the right-of-ways, do we need to just create, um, do we need a new resolution on that to give them the right-of-ways? Ronda said she thought one was spoke about maybe years ago, but maybe it just never got completed?
I'm not certain what you're talking about.
Well, we gave them permission to put their utilities in our right-of, right-of-ways at one time, but we can't find anything written writing about it. We were at the redevelopment commission meeting, David and I, and she asked at the end of that meeting after it was over, do you guys remember? Yeah, I, it seems like I recall that, I think Brett was here, came in and asked, and we all said, yeah, I don't know how many years ago it's been, but do we need a formal thing? I mean, we have joint.
So she'd probably just want something to cover hers, so if you did like a formal resolution allowing for them to place their utilities in the right-of-way. I, I think you guys had something that we did or talked about doing where you were asking for them to come to you before they do things, but it wasn't as to necessarily them, it was a different utility, I thought.
We just wanted to know when they're.
Right, we just wanna know in advance if they're.
Well, we had an issue with another one, J O, uh, what is it?
Joint.
They're patching a substandard, if you will.
Yeah, and it takes an act of Congress to get them to do.
You know, they seem to leave a lot of stuff not like it was when they found.
Didn't we establish a fee for them to?
Well, we talked about it.
Well, we, yeah, we need to put something together.
So I, I have what the county did, and they had in there that they had to patch back, and they had to put a certain amount of gravel in and things like that, so I can use that as a template.
Good.
If we're wanting to do a resolution on that.
Absolutely, and not just for, for, for Bloomingdale, but yeah, Joint, I know Joint came in and asked about running through town, and boy, they, they sure did run through town, uh.
Campers are glady.
Well, yeah, they're gone, they, there's some holes over.
Something they were supposed to, anybody that came in to work was supposed to come in and pay like a $25.
Yes, and you get a basically permit fee, and we go.
And we knew where they were gonna be.
We also probably should work at, with our ordinance, though, as far as when people are gonna put things in a right-of-way as hard as what they have to do, cause I don't think we've done that.
I think that would be a good meeting to have, and, because, I'll just tell you right now, one of the issues that we have is, a lot of times, these utility companies are putting stuff, I mean, right, stinking on top of our poles. And I know it aggravates our guys, when we go ahead and try to work something, we, we need to move something somewhere, we can't because we're, we're locked in. So if we do something along those lines, we might have some constipation, you know, at least when we go out and de-locate, you know, they stay without a certain amount of, inches or feet of whatever it is from our existing locations. I guess we need to. And that'd be, that, it's gonna require a lot of thought, a lot of discussion to do, so it may be a, a meeting between department heads, and Nick, and you guys as well.
Include Ariel in that conversation? Cause Nick, I think we need your help with counting that one, with the charter.
We don't have any connecting fees or anything for this area or anything?
Maybe on these holes.
That we need to, we need to make a motion.
No, I think, if he can, we'll figure out what needs to happen, we'll make something.
Oh, Bloomingdale, that's easy enough to give them permission currently to produce in the right-of-way, that's just a simple resolution. This ordinance for use of the right-of-way limitations.
I think it's ordinary, so it's. The only thing.
Can I just maybe tell her?
We can charge for things that are locked.
Yeah, I put on my to-do list. It's like BHT Incorporated.
BHTC?
BHTC Incorporated.
The Bloomingdale Hotel Incorporated.
Okay, um, there is, um.
The BHTC or BHT? You just did a bunch of stuff.
I always write, it's BHTC on their letterhead.
Okay, alright.
Company.
I always draw my check to BHTC and have them bounce it.
We just did all that, I just can't remember what I said.
What you got?
There's an open appointment for the alcohol board, we have a member that.
From Roger, yeah.
Couldn't sit on the alcohol board.
You have to be a five-year resident is what the issue was.
Is it party related? Is that why we put?
No, his was a five-year resident because they moved there.
No, it was, you have to five years, so he was, hasn't quite been there, five years didn't mean that.
Gosh, seems like he's been forever.
They like to throw these regulations on these different boards to keep things confusing.
Did you have someone on?
No.
Then I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to appoint Doug.
Doug, oh really? Yeah, Mr. Wise Height wants to do that? Okay, uh, he just. Busy guy. You made a motion.
I, yeah.
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Sure.
Propose? Good.
Okay, Doug, so I'll contact him and get him the paperwork.
He knows this, right?
Yes.
Well, you know, in the past.
I'm gonna have it as just a point to whoever I like.
I think we've done that once upon a time to a few people, uh, yeah.
Okay, my, and my last thing was just, I wasn't, I, I had gone to lunch, but Keith had come in and wanted to pay for five sheets of metal roofing material. That we had in our surplus, we, I do remember this release of liability for surplus, although I thought we were gonna put a list together before we did anything, but I wasn't sure on that.
I thought we had to determine what the.
And we don't have a value on the stuff.
Is that from Jack's building or where'd it come from? Yeah, or salvage stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, well, what's he offered?
Uh, five bucks a sheet.
Well, there you go.
It was five sheets, twenty-five bucks. Who, who wants this? Keith. He wants to make raised garden beds. Oh.
I saw metal was worth a lot of money right now.
I thought we wanted to salvage them for a future project, but.
Can we make an inventory before we get too far down the road, though? Is that possible?
Yeah.
I thought we were gonna put, the, or I thought that in a meeting we were gonna put together um a surplus inventory, kinda like the police department did before we had the auction.
This is fine, but.
Total, so.
This came up when we were looking at the telephone poles we had out there, there was a guy that wanted to buy some telephone or utility poles that we had taken down. So he said we can't sell them unless we have the, uh, that document in place.
Yeah.
So my reasoning is that applies to other junk that we have laying around.
Right, no, I, I don't have an issue with that, it'd just be good to have a mechanism to be able to track things coming and going, I guess was.
But you have an inventory, you can deduct it and add.
Because I know, um.
Cause we have to account for the funds because it's public property.
When I put this with um a payment from him, there's nothing to support the, oh, that's what we charge. Kind of like a fee schedule, that's, there's nothing, I don't have any other supporting documentation that says, you know, oh, it's five dollars per sheet. So that's, that's my, if we had an inventory.
So if we had an inventory, then we could mark what we'd sell it for, per sheet or per pole or per other, okay, I understand.
Right, so.
So I just need to list things that we're able to sell, and you guys need to determine the value.
And then.
On what you would sell that at.
And I'll draft a resolution that adopts that list.
So what do we do with this one?
If, if it's okay, I just want, I wanna document in my minutes that it was approved by the board to let him purchase that.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have, thank you.
If you just send me the list, I'll draft the resolution.
Because we have, we have the old poles, we have, uh, we have a ton of those hydrants out there, but I'm a little bit wary to sell those off. Have people ask for them before.
For decorations?
Yeah, yeah, people are buying.
Let me put them in my yard with my dog, see on that.
Yeah, that's what I did down at the dog park.
Yeah.
I put a hydrant bed there, you just, you painted a different color other than red or yellow.
You can't let the price side by me, I'm interested in it.
They're heavy.
They are heavy.
Kevston, yes.
I don't know what else we have back there, though, that.
We got a, a military truck back there, don't we?
We can't sell.
We still have that, that blazer, we're trying to get the title on it, I think. Cause I think you guys just need to keep that and make that the town's liaison meeting. I'll drive that baby around.
Is it drivable?
Oh, yeah, Alan's got it going. Oh, that's it.
We just have to petition to get a, something down, was it registration or something? There was something with.
Title.
You, you have to get the title if we were gonna sell it, because it was a government surplus vehicle, and they'd gone here and there and here and there.
So if we're not selling it, we just need to play it?
I don't think we can play it.
We don't have a good title.
We don't have a title to.
Because it's government surplus vehicle, it's.
Go get some plates off one of those other old trucks.
Okay, Nick, what you got?
Um, so this is the amended Rockville Department, uh, Police Department Fee Schedule Resolution of, um. This is with recommendations from the, uh, Police Commission. So they recommended a production of accident reports be five dollars per report with additional page, per page rate of fifty cents per standard page, twenty cents per, that's not accurate. It's one, one dollar per standard page and one dollar for page fax and a five dollar email fee. Um, copies of town code of ordinance, one dollar per standard page, road closure permit fee, twenty-five dollars per day. With zero dollar fee for nonprofit groups, and all of that subject to the closure approval of the town council. Copying fee, public records, one dollar per page, one dollar per page for fax, for records, five dollars for emails and five dollars for certification of records, that's as the public records. Criminal history report of ten dollars, then record check of five dollars per vehicle, vehicle impound fee of fifty dollars. The owner must show proof of ownership, proper registration, insurance and valid driver's license before release of the vehicle. Residential and commercial security alarm response fee, fifty dollars per incident, so that's, that's adopting their recommendations from the Police Commission. And we'd previously adopted a different one, so this would just take its place if you guys approve.
Would you recommend any changes? What's your thoughts?
I don't see an issue with it, uh, it's just a matter of what that threshold on fees, the one that we had previously was adopted out of Vigo County and that was their fee schedule. So I, I think the two big things to point out were the increase in the, uh, vehicle impound fee and increase in the residential and commercial security alarm response fee were up to fifty dollars. Now, granted, some of these things just go with discretion with the officer, for instance, if the first incident where their alarm would go off, I would assume the officer would probably give them the benefit of the doubt, it's more so the service of penalty.
And there's, it's, there are just a few, but people that have those like home health, their alerts.
Right.
Um, first one, they're never gonna not go if somebody hasn't paid.
Right, it's just if you have this repeat non, non-emergency offender, it gives them something that they can do.
I mean, like, one of the dollar stores has just an amazing, something like five hundred last year.
Good grief.
In our town?
Yeah.
In our town?
It was, I mean, it may not have been that, it was enough that we'd have collected about twenty-five hundred from them.
So, I mean, this is what the Police Commission's recommended, I, I received this from Randy, I assume Randy's in agreement with it, he didn't force us.
So on the impound fee, we, 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 we impound a car and.
We can attach a fee of fifty dollars that they have to pay.
And then the word, where, where, where do they go?
They go to, um.
Time heavy.
Heavy D's.
Then he collects a fee for storage, probably.
He does, yes.
He collects the fee or they come up here and pay and get a release?
He collects a fee for the storage, but this vehicle impound fee would be in addition to that fee.
Well, you know, perhaps we should.
We talked about making an impound fee down.
Well, storage, yeah, um, okay, never mind, yeah, yeah, it's interesting, so, so I, you need a motion?
It'd be a motion to adopt this as the fee schedule and replace the previously adopted.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you just have to sign as approved for an objective each of you.
Okay.
Does the fire department have any fees?
They probably do, I don't have a copy of it.
My hydrant fee, they have that.
No, no, I'm talking about they come to your house.
Oh, I'm, I'm certain they do, I don't have that list, but yeah.
I'm just curious if, I'm not saying they should or shouldn't, I just wondered if they did.
That's a good question, yeah.
I would imagine they do.
They don't have to raise money.
It's probably been in place for a while, though.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Um. Our next ordinance violation court date is April nineteenth at one thirty, there's three set for that day, we did have one that's been resolved in Olive Court. Uh, homeowners fixed the underlying issue, so we've dismissed that. Next small claims date's April twenty-sixth at one thirty. The Officer Martins provided me a summary of evidence that's eligible for disposal, I'm currently sorting through that. To make sure we made all our statutory requirements on it, um, it's about yay tall or so, so it's quite a bit of, so it'd be a little while before we get through all of that. But this is evidence where the case has been concluded, and we either have to return the evidence or we can dispose of the evidence. Most of this evidence isn't things that would be of the nature that we could resell. We did have our auction a while back, if you recall, on the stuff that we could resell. Um, so this probably won't result in any type of financial, anything for the town.
The stuff we need to burn or what?
Yeah, a lot of it's, you know, contraband, um, things like that, we already disposed of pocket knives and firearms and things like that in our auction, so. This is more so illegal objects that need disposed of, but you still have to go through your statutory requirements, so Cameron and I are working through that currently. But yeah, it's significant reading. Then I, I did have a resolution as to the water, but I need to make some tweaks to that based on a conversation with Cindy, um, so we don't have that resolution ready for you guys to sign today.
As to the PER?
As to the water project, yeah, so I, I had a misunderstanding as to what was needed on that, so I'm gonna make some corrections with some input from Cindy, and then we should have that at our next meeting to proceed with, so. That's what I have as far as reporting.
All right.
All right, before we move on real quick, you park, cause I know you wanna get into your.
Oh, I just got one other thing left, we covered everything, I just got one more thing.
Okay, then fire away, let's go.
Yeah, well, it's just nothing, I, I updated our, our debt. She, and I thought, well, I'll just hand these out, everybody knows.
Why they're even in color.
Well, they're even in color, so yeah, this is our latest debt for twenty twenty-two, shows where we're at start of the year and where we're gonna be at the end of the year, and it's just kinda neat to know these things. Okay, somebody comes up the street, how much town debt do you have? Well, my gosh, you can say this is how much we have.
You sit down, judge.
I have a lot of people talking, everyone about that.
So yeah, well, it's, it's something we should always be aware of in a back reminder thing, but, uh, you know, at the end of the year, we'll be down to two point eight million, uh. I started, uh, gosh, where were we at there, at two point three, three point three, over seven years ago, or ten years ago, we were over seven, though, so it's, it's. What's really neat, too, is that we have nothing beyond ten years, we have a seven years left on the twenty-ten bond at the sewer, eight years left on the other bond at the sewer, two on the water, five on storm.
I'll try to spend some more money.
Well, if we can do without taking on debt, if we can do without taking on debt. Cause you know, here's the thing, guys, once you get that debt paid off, well, I can water, you know, we have a project coming up and we're, we're doing, uh, where's that guy, what's my payment per year? Yeah, I'm watering, we're doing a hundred and seventy, I got a hundred and seventy-seven this year, I mean, yeah, and that, it would look at sewer, my, where am I at in sewer? Yeah, sewer payment's humongous, you know, we've got two eighty-three and a hundred and eighty-two, I mean, we had that free cash flow to, to save, just in a couple of years, you could save up for a project, for Pete's sakes. But it's gonna be hard to get there, I know it is, I mean, to, to get to where. We're debt-free and don't have to take on more debt in the next eight years would be quite a feat.
Something else for it.
There's always something breaking, I know, but just the fact we took this, this ten-year debt out, instead of doing, we have eight left on, we took that ten-year out for last sewer improvement, I mean, gosh, we're already two years into it.
We could get through the next five years, and then you just have the two outstanding.
Yeah, the problem, yeah, the problem, historically, we had, we had, when we came in twenty twelve, we had debt that went back forty years. And, and you know, they take out these long-term debts, and by the time, I mean, heck, twenty-year stuff breaks, seems like every twenty years we have a major project in water or sewer. And so, you know, if you take out debt that's beyond twenty years, you're not even gonna get it paid off for the next one. So that's just all I had left, David.
Side note there.
No, it's fine, I'm just, I just, I mean, I.
You saw it on my folder.
Well, yeah, you said that you wanted to touch on all that.
Well, we did, we did, we touched on everything that's.
We're approaching hour two, so I'm just.
We're good, we're good.
Uh, Jeff, I wanted to ask you on the, on the community crossings, Anderson is not on that, on this call?
Not on this call.
Okay, no, okay, I've been asking him, so, yeah, we're looking at the second call.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and given the fact that, you know, we're gonna have some work done there by Herman, you know. And it, well, yeah, well, let's just see how that goes, and if we can work it in, that's fine.
Are we doing a Herman's?
Well, Vector's coming in and doing a.
Sewer, or I mean, gas, yeah.
Right down there by Herman.
Okay.
So is the, I think it's twenty twenty-four, we're further gonna do that, so, you know, maybe.
And that, I mean, we, if, if something's gonna happen, you know, we could probably get that moved up, so. But, and I had one other thing, just, just to throw out there, as far as Jefferson Street and our parking lot. Do you guys wanna put something out there as far as donations for the trees, or do you want us to pay for them, I mean, just?
Well, we need to have an idea of what, what kind of tree and number of trees, probably have a little more specifics, but yeah, we could take donations.
I mean, do, yeah, I mean, if you have somebody.
Well, that brings up another thing, uh, David, I'm glad you brought it up, uh. What's his name? Luke Waltz, you know, he was, uh, what meeting was he at?
Project.
Structure point meeting.
He's had some structure point meeting a while back, uh, he talked to Roger, I think, have you, there was some email I saw where him and Roger had spoke about that parking lot. Apparently this kid has his own company, he designs outdoor space, his parking lots, parks, if it's outdoors, it's what he does. I think he's talked to you, he talked, I think he's talked to you, David.
We briefly talked in here after.
But he's expressed interest in, in, in this parking lot and, uh, some ideas, to see what he might have, I don't know, uh. I mean, bottom line, engineers specialize, just like doctors or anybody, and, and you know, you have, uh, specialties, just like in attorneys, you have, uh, do, you know, guys that do it all. And then you have people that specialize in, in, in specific types of law, same thing in engineering, uh, I guess my point is, that's what this kid does, he lives in town, uh. Yeah, we should probably let him bend our ears a little bit and see what he thinks of our newly acquired lot, might have some interesting ideas.
Does he have something that he'd like to share?
I don't know if he has anything.
I mean, I haven't talked to him since our meeting that we had.
Well, yeah, it's been a while since I talked to him, it's just, uh, well, I saw him Saturday night briefly, but we didn't talk about that, there's more important things.
Do I? Three weeks, four weeks, whatever.
So I'm just throwing it out there, are you guys okay?
Oh, I don't mind talking to it, I mean, no, I don't have an issue with that.
I mean, he can talk, he'd be working with Roger on that, I mean, he, he, he's the lead engineer on it.
Yeah, you're, you're hiring him to, to design something?
Basically be a landscaper?
Well.
Or just a design?
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out.
I bet it's gonna be pretty steep.
I don't know. I don't know, I guess you could say, okay, uh, uh, you know, what are you, what are you, uh, proposing, I guess?
So is he wanting hired or is he donating his time?
I'm not clear on that either, so we need to clarify that, but I just wanted to bring it up, cause it's been out there for a while, I'm on my, I finally remembered it again.
I just wanna say this, too, as far as the green space over at the parking lot, I mean, whatever we do, we need to keep Brad in the loop.
Well, the foundation, yes.
We talked to him at that meeting, he had some ideas, because they're, they're probably gonna police it more than we are. And, and you know, he already talked about mowing it, any kind of issues with that, so, I mean.
Well, I guess I should, yeah, David.
No, I just want.
Glad you brought that, well, he, he, him and, well, how was it you were here, lady, the depot, was it him and some kids from Ball State?
Mainly his design.
Well, it's for him from Ball State. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's where the depot design came from, it was from Luke and some other kids at Ball State. That's been a long time. Yeah. So I guess get clarification on what he's proposing.
Yeah, I mean, if it's just for a design, I would think we'd open it up, I mean, if we're gonna pay somebody, then I think you'd wanna open it up because.
Oh, right.
Landscapers.
Right.
Would be able to do the same thing and implement the project.
Well, I think it's just design, I mean, you know, I, 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 that's apparently what, what this firm does.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Well, it's gonna, anybody sitting, yeah, anybody got anything to say?
Sorry, I just have one quick thing, so Nick, you mentioned that resolution wasn't ready yet, um, but before you got here, the board acted on what you guys planned, because you wanna try to have that done before the thirteenth of April?
Yeah, oh.
Yeah, yeah, we approved to go ahead with, we approved, we adopted the preliminary engineering report for the water improvement project.
So we just need a resolution formalizing the adopment of the PER, then. All right. Dan, I have a copy of the PER.
Yeah, I ordered it to you.
All right.
I was gonna print one off tonight, just to have it, but it's a hundred and sixty pages.
It's a long.
Oh, that sounds wonderful. Yeah, if you just forward it instead of printing it there.
Yeah.
Cause I'm only gonna take.
Read it on the screen.
I know. I just wanna make sure I get the wording right.
So I can get it signed.
Wonderful.
Those are the.
We're good.
On water projects.
Yeah, I missed them. Always a big, always gonna get it signed and all.